All right, we ready?
Yeah.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public. I'm sorry.
Start the roll call.
Let's, yeah, can I get a do-over? Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker. Mr. Corangelo.
Present.
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Ms. Gwass.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Reese. Mr. Winston.
Here.
And President Lacks.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise, this is the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we get back. I apologize.
Now you're rolling.
Suffering from a upper respiratory infection, I'm on antibiotics, so I am not contagious, nothing you have to worry about, but I am apparently a little spicy this evening, so my apologies. But we'll start this again. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies in which any business effect in their interest is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening, I am going to call for a closed session, first thing. So whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act, and the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for the aforementioned subjects. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mark.
Second.
And second by Lee. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We are in close. Thank you, we will see you in approximately an hour. Okay, welcome back. This is much more like it, very exciting packed house this evening. We are going to start off with a superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Lacks, and good evening, everyone. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students from Irwin Elementary School. The art teacher of these talented students is Brooke Severon, and Joanne Chamilloitz is their principal. On Tuesday, November 15th, the Special Education Parent Advisory Group and the Special Education Department hosted 27 vendors for a resource fair. Although it was a rainy and cold night, we had many parents come out to see how the community is inclusive to all students. We had teachers, administrators, and parents collaborate to build a network for our students with special needs. Additional resources from the event will be posted on the district website under the title "Special Education." Bound Monroe students shared letters of appreciation with local veterans from East Brunswick VFW Post 133. They learned about the work of service dogs from Navy veteran and founder of Unbroken Warriors, Michael Dowen, and his dog, Emery. Our school community thanks all veterans for their service. This year, the East Brunswick High School math team held a tryout to see which members would be eligible to compete at the Harvard MIT Math Tournament. They were also featured in a TAP article. This is a national math competition held in Boston that consisted of over 1,000 students from a variety of prestigious high schools around the country. Eleven members of the math team were selected, traveled to Boston, and given the opportunity to compete at the HMMT. While they did not place in the competition, this was a great experience for students, and they were happy for the opportunity they had to participate. The East Brunswick Marching Band finished off the 2022 fall season with two great events. The Marching Band Booster Club hosted an extremely successful marching band festival at our high school on Saturday, October 22nd. Thirteen local high school marching bands participated, and it was a wonderful evening of musical performances. On Sunday, October 30th, the East Brunswick Marching Band attended state championships at the College of New Jersey and competed amongst some of the top marching bands in the state. And the opportunity for our students to perform in a college stadium was one that they will never forget. On Wednesday, November 9th, four student athletes signed letters of commitment to play in their sport at the collegiate level. We wish them well as they continue their academic and athletic careers. Congratulations to our September and October High School Athletes of the Month. Students were selected for this honor by their coaching staff based on performance, demonstration of leadership, effort in practice, and as always, among our East Brunswick athletes, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the parents who visited their children's school for American Education Week today. Parents were able to see firsthand the high-quality teaching provided by our talented teachers and supported by our innovative administrators. The East Brunswick High School Drama Club is proud to present Puffs. The production will run Friday, November 18th, and Saturday, November 19th at 7:00 p.m. and Sunday, November 20th at 3:00 p.m. Tickets can be purchased online at ebhsdrama.org. Just a few reminders, Wednesday, November 23rd is a single-session day with lunch served for students in grades K through 6. And schools will be closed on Thursday, November 24th, and Friday, November 25th for the Thanksgiving break. And as I told the administrative staff earlier today, I'm thankful for their work and dedication. I'm also thankful for a supportive school board and community, and I wish everyone a peaceful holiday break. Thank you.
Very nice. Speaking of appreciation, we do have some resolutions of appreciation and recognition. Would you like to start with our American Education Week?
Absolutely, we'll step out front. I told you she was going.
It's in time, Megan. Okay, American Education Week, November 13th through the 19th of 2022. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality, and whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future, and whereas public education employees, be they administrators, teachers, health and student service workers, librarians, custodians, bus drivers, clerical workers, food service professionals, skilled trade workers, security guards, technical employees, or substitutes, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas public schools encourage community by bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials for a common purpose. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education proclaims November 13th through the 19th of 2022 as American Education Week. Does anyone like to make the motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Winston, second by Mr. Hong. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
And we have Ms. Knoppenberger, who's going to accept on behalf of the Education Association.
Fine.
These doctors are making, now tell me.
Thank you. Congratulations.
No photo op? We're gonna get a photo.
Okay. Do we, like, reenact it?
We can't. Kind of like the athletic signing where the kids have to pin there with the pin.
See, this is good. I'm glad.
Only because Karen forced me.
Thank you.
Great acting.
And I went to Anderson Bowl.
I love the Anderson Bowl. All right, Megan. You snuck in at just the right time. Tell us what is going on in the high school. You have lots of soon-to-be high schoolers. I know you have many years, but you know, it's gonna go very fast, so tell them what you have to look forward to.
I was thinking about how I came in, like, just in time. So we have winter sports starting next week, so I'm a swimmer, so my swim season is starting. And I just remember my freshman year, we had our, like, end-of-the-season banquet, and I was, I came in, like, halfway through the banquet, because I didn't think I was gonna go, but then I went, and the exact moment that I walked in, they called my name up to, like, get my letter, and then, like, it was, like, perfect, it was, like, theatrical, so I have a knack for this, like, coming along. That's my thing.
This is your first time.
This is not my first time. It's happened many times. I have stories. I have a lot of stories. So, yeah, we have winter sports coming up. I think most of them are starting next week. There's a whole list of them. But tonight is the Anderson Bowl, so I think, t-shirt? Yeah, t-shirt is a ticket to the game. So basically, Anderson Bowl used to be called Powder Puff, and it's like an annual thing that we do at the high school. Basically, the girls play, like, football, and the boys cheer. So it's really fun. Unfortunately, I'm not there tonight, but that's happening, and we renamed it to Anderson Bowl in honor of Ms. Anderson, who passed recently, so, yeah. This is, like, her big thing with NHS, so, yeah, we dedicated that to her. So this weekend, we also have EBHS Drama Club, which is putting on the Puffs Play. I've heard a lot of good things about it. If you see the posters, it's like a Harry Potter-themed kind of play, so that would be really interesting. And at the end of the month, we have an orchestra concert coming up, and I think that kind of kicks off a lot of our art performances, so we have a lot of art stuff going on at the high school. We've got, like, orchestra, band, et cetera. There's a music society performance that's gonna happen next month, so we have a lot of that. But besides that, just for, like, us seniors, it's just college app season. That's just, that's the biggest headache right now. Yeah. We had our early deadline in the beginning of November, which I didn't get to talk about because I was not here, but we had that, and I can't, there was quite a bit of talk on Halloween about, do I go to school tomorrow, or do I stay home and write that last essay? But I think everybody made it, so that was pretty good. And, yeah, just lastly, I missed last meeting, so I met with Dr. V today, and he told me that somebody said congratulations for my STEM Scholars Award, so, yeah, thank you guys for that.
She's gonna be a tough act to follow. But, thank you very much for that report. If anyone can do it, I think our friends at Warrens Dorfer can, and I know that because I too am a Warrens Dorfer alumni, so I am particularly thrilled. Megan, so you see what you have to look forward to? I am particularly thrilled to have you guys here today, and we're gonna learn about the Bears Sportsmanship Award, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so who wants to kick it off? You got your teachers here.
So, good evening, East Brunswick community, and Dr. Velusky, and the members of the Board. So what we have to present to you today is the Warrens Dorfer Elementary Sportsmanship Award, which is the physical education incentive program. What is it? So it's a weekly award that is announced during the Warrens Dorfer newscast every Friday morning for the whole school to see. The PE teachers, which is me, Mr. Maldonado, and Mr. Ken Valerio, pick one student who goes above and beyond, shows sportsmanship, trying their best every day, or every time, is encouraging, is inclusive with her peers, and celebrates the victory of others' success.
All right. Hello, everyone, I want to thank you for having us tonight to be able to present this. So what the incentive program actually gives the kids is a free ticket to one of the varsity sport games. As some of you may know, I coach football, so we had some of our winners come out to the game, and you'll see some photos in the next slide, and be able to meet some of the high school athlete players, some of them whom which went to Warrens Dorfer, to just add a little bit of a special feel to that meeting. They also get a t-shirt and a certificate, and they're also, as Mr. M said, are announced on the Warrens Dorfer news every Friday, and all the kids are super excited to see who won for that week. So as I said, meet and greet with the athletes, and like I said, with the football, we had them actually on the sidelines pre-game, so it was special. And then it also gives a opportunity for the high school athletes to mentor the little guys, right? So we are talking about community involvement and kind of having our kids from the elementary school bridge the gap to the high school athletes, and it kind of worked both ways, which was nice as well to see. This is just some pictures of us actually giving the awards out. And then, like I said, overall greater purpose for sportsmanship in class and out of class. So we're trying to take what they do great in class and bring it to the outside world moving forward. There we go, so there's some of the pictures. And the varsity cheerleading coach also had the girls come over and also watch some of the cheerleaders do their stunts pre-game, that was special as well. So I'd like to have some of our students from Warrens Dorfer come up and just kind of share why they won and what it kind of meant to them. Jacob, you wanna go first?
Sure.
All right, come on up.
Hello, my name is Jacob, and I'm here because I was awarded the Sportsmanship Student of the Week. I received this award because I showed good sportsmanship, by after every game, I would say, "Good game," and if someone on, like, other teams would lose, I'd say, "It's just the game, and you did amazing." Also, when someone makes a mistake on my team, I'll always say, "You got the next one," and when we get to that part again, I always help them. What the Sportsmanship Award meant to me is, like, at the football game, I saw the players from Warrens Dorfer, it's really cool because they came from the very school I'm at. Also, I saw their warm-up on the field, which I've never really been to, like, a real football game, so it was, like, really cool to see that, and that's my presentation.
Hi, I'm Lily. I'm here. I received this award because I always follow the rules and I am helpful to other students. Winning the Sportsmanship Award made me feel happy and proud because I was being recognized
Hello, my name, hello, my name is Peyton Killerheart. I'm here because I was awarded the Sportsmanship Student of the Week. I received this award because I listen to everyone's ideas and bring it into team games. Winning the Sportsmanship Award made me feel very excited because I was proud of myself. In the end, I'm proud to be here.
Hello, my name is Jack. I got this Sportsmanship Award. I helped a student that was left out in a game. When I went to the game, I was excited to meet the players.
That concludes our presentation. Thank you, everyone.
Good job, everyone.
Thank you. Great job, and if you think that was exciting, I want you to know, Jacob, you saw some of the players that are at the high school now that went to Warrens Dorfer? So when I went to Warrens Dorfer, actually, and then the high school, I graduated with one of our most famous football players, Josh Miller, who went on to play in the NFL. So you should feel very good about that because you guys have an alumni football player that went all the way to the top, and he started, just like you guys, great sportsmanship, wonderful personality, amazing athletic ability, and just an all-around good person. So I am expecting really terrific things from you guys in the future, since you have such a strong start now. Thank you so much for being here.
He was a Steeler, too.
Yeah.
That's Steeler Dan.
That's right, see? And he'll be honored in the Hall of Fame, so if you haven't, if you haven't met him, I'll make the introduction.
Great presentation.
Yes, you guys did terrific.
What I heard, though, was these young ladies and gentlemen talked about being rule followers, and they went to Warrens Dorfer. Megan went to Warrens Dorfer, and she comes in late.
How far is the process?
Oh, okay.
But Megan is a senior, who's...
She was a student, though.
That's right, she didn't have Mr. Satari. See?
Could say it.
Maybe she did, actually, I shouldn't say that. Well, I was a rule follower, so I'm still a rule follower. You guys are in great hands.
Nice job.
So this is going to bring us to our Good of the Cause for the Public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate staff. All participants are limited to three minutes duration, and I do want to remind everybody that this is the time to be able to speak to the Board of Education. Please don't mistake our silence and listening to your opinions and comments as not caring. This is your time to speak, not ours. If there is something that we can be helping you with on the other side of it, there are two women sitting over there. Happy birthday, by the way, to Ms. Janet and Ms. Karen, and if we don't...
She gets applause for it.
If we don't already have your information, we're gonna ask you to speak to one of those women so that your issues can be addressed at all of your time, so... Before I ask if anyone would like to speak to the public, I'm going to ask the children if they would like to go home and finish homework and go to bed beforehand. Oh, no.
The go-to-bed part was what we wanted.
I see, I see Ms. Lily being a...
Oh, no.
Lily, I think you should go sit in Megan's seat, try it out. I have a feeling you may be in there in a few years.
If I may, what they might like is to take a quick picture of her.
Oh, we would love that. All right, then we will take a quick, a few-minute recess. We'll take some pictures, and then this way, the ones who would like to leave are welcome to do so. And Ms. Lily, you can, as I said, get cozy in that seat up there, because we're gonna keep it warm for you for the next couple of years, so... All right.
Recess?
Yep.
Okay.
Is there anyone this evening that would like to speak to the Board? Please come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Am I supposed to step on this, or?
Sorry.
Makes you feel tall now, right?
Yeah. Hi, Kayla DeCico, 24th Street.
Could you please repeat your name?
Kayla DeCico.
Thank you.
I just wanted to bring up the fact that the water fountains in school are still turned off, and I think now that we're past the mask-wearing and the six feet apart, we can put the water fountains back on. There's been a few situations in the past few months where one of my kids forgot their water bottle on the bus, or at home, or whatever, and they literally went the entire day without drinking water. And my six-year-old, at lunch one day, asked one of the lunch eights or the teachers in the cafeteria if she could have some water. She brought her up to the lunch line, and my daughter said, "Oh, well, I don't have any money," because I pack her lunch every day. And she said, "Oh, okay, I'm sorry then," and brought her back to her seat and didn't give her anything to drink. So I did email the principal, and she said that there's cups available and that there's a water fill-up station, but there's only one water fill-up station in the whole school, and they're not in the cafeteria all day, so, you know, there's water fountains all throughout the school. I feel like they should be turned on and made available to the kids, especially when they're running around at recess, during gym class and everything. And, you know, everyone's, you know, sick right now, they should be hydrated throughout the day. So I just think it's really important for the kids to have access to water. I know it's my responsibility as their parent to pack them water, but, you know, they're kids, they're in elementary school, they're gonna leave their water bottle at home sometime. So I'm just requesting that maybe we can start thinking about putting the water fountains back on in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Velusky.
I would just like to respond that your request is granted. We already started.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah. We started the year just being very cautious about students at the water fountain. The water filling stations were available, as you said, but we are beginning to turn the water fountains back on.
Okay.
Look at that, another happy customer. Thank you, Mrs. DeCico. Is anyone else that would like to speak this evening to the Board? Yes? Come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, hello again. I'm Heather James, 2501 Commons Drive, and I'm here on behalf of the families who ride the bus at Commons Drive, as well as the Community Association, which did send a letter to the Board. Dr. Velusky, we very much appreciate your thorough investigation of our bus issue and your email to all of us. Unfortunately, we don't love your conclusion, but your responsiveness is truly noted. I just wanted to comment, say that we do hope that you will reconsider and think about putting our bus stop back on Commons Drive. Our students are still being honked at by cars that are seeking to cut through Kingswood to those two major roads, and the situation has been exacerbated by the fact that it is now cold, so more parents are driving to the bus stop than it is a significant number of children at this consolidated stop. So I know you mentioned double parking in the community, but that is predominantly caused by parents driving to the bus stops, so the traffic situation has actually been exacerbated by the change. And you also mentioned speeding in the community in your letter. But we do have plastic rumble strips, like speed humps, that we do put out in the community, and we have asked the Board to get them out there. We cannot have permanent speed humps due to a township ordinance, we actually want them, but we do not control that main road, Kingswood Boulevard. The speed limit's higher on Kingswood Boulevard, and the speeding is worse, and we can't have the rumble strips there. So, you know, we think that this is not the safest stop, and we think it's not the most efficient. We still have a lot of lateness problems on our bus as well. So Halloween, our kids got home an hour late, and two days in November, they were picked up late, actually causing one parent to take her children to work in the morning, and then to take them to school late. So, you know, this is not a solved issue for us. We know we're having a lot of problems still with busing, but we'd just like to keep it on your radar and ask for your help as fellow Warrens Dorfer members and fellow community members. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. James. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the Board this evening? Okay, seeing that, I'm gonna...
We have it.
Oh, I'm so sorry. See, you guys are hiding in the back for me, I'm so sorry. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Alie Chardelino, 1906 Commons at Kingswood Drive. I really would just like to support what Heather was saying about the bus stop, and we do appreciate your quick response to our request originally. It really is still a traffic congestion concern, as well as predominantly a safety issue for the kids, and the distance from where most of them live in the neighborhood. So I just wanted to highlight that and let you know that it really still is a concern. If you can re-review it, reconsider, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sure, you know, is there anyone else? I apologize if I'm not seeing people. I think I see no hands at this point. So now I'm going to close the public portion and bring us to our Board of Education items for the evening. May I have a motion for Board of Education item number one? Minister Rivers. Moved by Mr. Hong, second by Mr. Corangelo. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Community programs, may I please have a motion for items one and two this evening on community Nobody wants a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Sizmar, second by Mr. Hong. Is there any discussion? No, I do have a quick question on item number two for the Dave and Buster's. Is this the first time we've had an off-site community programs, Joe?
Mr. Gosho.
That we've had, I love the idea of it. I'm not sure how we came up with the idea of why it's limited to 100 kids, and how, is it first come, first served? Is it...
First of all, if you're popular, it's like three meetings in a row, come up and speak. It's not the first time we've done off-site trips. It's the first time we're doing something like this on a day that we're closed. So it's just based off of Dave and Buster's capacity and the staffing we can get for that day, so 100 kids is, you know, two buses.
So we are, so I wasn't sure it was a bus, okay. And will it be a first-come, first-served then for the students?
Yes, yes. So once registration opens, make sure you don't wait. I mean, I think it's a really... I mean, I, I think it's a really good deal, um, unlimited food, gameplay, um, and I think it works out to less than $10 an hour. You're not gonna get a babysitter for that.
No, that's great.
So, plus, with the, you know, advantage of going to Dave and Buster's, and I'm sure the kids will have a great time.
Oh, yeah, it sounds like a fun day, so for parents?
Can I come?
Yeah, I know, I love Dave and Buster's. Parents K through six, then, um, when does registration open for this?
That, I don't know off the top of my head. Assuming you guys approve it tonight, we'll, we'll get on it.
Alright, well then, keep your eyes posted, because that sounds like a really fun trip for your kids on Martin Luther King that are going to be home that day, so. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Have fun, and Susannah and I are willing to chaperone, see? If you need some more chaperones. Okay, leading us to curriculum and instruction, may I please have a motion for item one? I was gonna question. Moved by Mr. Hong, second by Mr. Winston, is there any discussion? Um, I do have another question. Can you tell us the current number of students enrolled in the, in the program?
Yeah.
Twenty? Thank you.
I'm glad you had it, Dr. Bulley. Was it 19, or 18, or 19 about two weeks ago? So, as you recall, this program is not, not that old. I'm gonna say probably seven years old now. And it has grown. And, and these are students that, they're not full-time students, they're in and out. But at this current point in time, those 20 students represent that population.
Yeah, I'd love to get, um, a presentation down the road on how we're doing.
Yeah, because our, our challenge and our, our objective always is to get students back into the regular classroom setting. But for some students, this alternate path is, is really important for them.
No, this has been very successful. Thank you, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We also have one item on facilities this evening, may I please have a motion for facilities? Moved by Mr. Winston.
Second.
Second by Mr. Corangelo, is there any discussion? Mr. Hong?
So, uh, for this, uh, compliance, uh, only two elementary schools are mentioned. How about, uh, other, um, six elementary schools? Are they fully compliant, or those two are additionally, were needed, just for the compliance?
Uh, this, uh, for members of the public as well, uh, this is a, um, uh, approval for variation uh, in terms of toilet room facilities. Uh, this applies specifically for the, um, pre-K and kindergarten classrooms. When we have a program that is, that is opened in a building where there is not a toilet facility within the classroom, we need a variance approval from the Department of Education. Uh, we have a couple of sections, actually three sections, and one in each of three schools, where we don't have, uh, the bathroom facility within the classroom. So, um, that's why this is being presented. Uh, the other schools at this point are fine, but if we were to have a need to open a section in another building where there was not a toilet facility within the classroom, we would need a variance for that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hope, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Before I ask for a motion to separate items one through nine on financial services, is anything needing separating out? No, then may I please have a motion for items one through nine on financial services? With Mr. Corangelo. Any takers on the second? Second, I'm just close. Is there any discussion on items one through nine under financial services?
Just got one quick question.
Mr. Winston?
Uh, on, uh, item number one, capital reserve withdrawal, how many more payments do we have for these, uh, the TCU's? Is this, am I seeing an installment, or what am I seeing?
No, we're, we're seeing, um, we're seeing variations. We talked about change orders at a previous meeting. So this is, um, I believe this is related to change orders that have been approved. So it's a timing issue.
The TCU's themselves, they have been paid in full, are we done?
Yes.
Okay.
The TCU's, yes, we went from, uh, doing a lease purchase on those to doing an outright payment.
That's what I thought.
There will be, on the construction side, uh, additional payments forthcoming on that project because we haven't paid it in full, um, but that's still within the contract amount.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Winston, any other discussion? Alright, well, this is a roll call vote, so will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
And Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs., uh, nope, Mrs. Reese is not here. Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And President Lacks?
Yes, motion carries. Um, I believe we have a personnel addendum this evening under human resources.
Yes.
Can I please have a motion for our human resources items this evening? Moved by Mr. Winston, second by Mrs. Gwass, is there any discussion? Okay, this is another roll call vote, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Lacks?
Yes, motion carries. May I please have a motion for the one item under staff development this evening? Moved by Mr. Hong, second by Mr. Corangelo, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Is there anything needing separating out, items one through three under student services, before I call for a motion? Then may I please have a motion for items one through three for student services? Mr. Corangelo, thank you, is that Mr. Winston for a second? Any discussion on student services? Nope, another roll call, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Lacks?
Yes, motion carries. Our last, um, is our transportation services, may I please have a motion for item number one?
So moved.
Mr., Mr. Hong and Mr. Corangelo, again, okay. Is there any discussion? No, um, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. This brings us to new and or old business, community, uh, community reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the board. Who would like to? Mrs. Chu?
Um, just an update, though, the Policy Committee met last night. Uh, Mr. Hong, Mr. Corangelo, and, um, the administrative team met to go over, I think it was like 140 pages or so of, of policy, uh, updates. And, um, it was fun reading it on my iPhone because I couldn't get it up on the screen, so my eyes are in pain, but, um, really a lot of good work by the administrative team to keep, uh, policies up to date with, um, with laws and regulations. Um, so a number of those you're gonna see, the board will see on December 1st on the agenda, and we have another meeting in December, so there'll be more policies coming. But, um, good meeting and, and thank you for, uh, the hard work in, you know, providing all these updates for us.
I also want to say, you had a great meeting with, we learned a lot from you, so.
Thank you.
It was a great lesson, thank you.
I, I still want to mention for the public that on our website, under the Board of Education, all of our policies and regulations are entirely searchable. So if you're looking for something, that's, that's the place to go.
So if you need some light reading and you can't sleep, go for it. Mr. Hong and then Mr. Sizmar.
So, uh, Monday night, uh, we had a great meeting. Curriculum committee had a very wonderful meeting, uh, with Mr. Winston and Ms. Baker, uh, present. So we have two to 47 attendees. Their multiple class was approved, proposed, and approved. And, uh, I believe this is provide a for, for teachers to exchange ideas, to help each other grow. So this is, uh, very good, and, you know, I really appreciate those teachers and administrators after a long day and stay with us for two hours, but I'm not bored, I was really excited. During this process, I learned by myself, and I learned a lot more from the teachers. And I believe the teachers learn from each other by doing the presentation, by listening to other teachers' ideas. This is very good meeting, I love this kind of meeting.
That's great.
Two items, one, uh, this past election day, thank you for the residents, uh, that supported me in the last election. I think the argument can be made, uh, your local elections are probably the most important in your life. There's a lot of good, and there's a lot of other things that go on in this world and in this country, but, uh, locally, you know, these are your children. And I want to thank you for having faith in me and the other incumbents for doing a small part in helping take care of your children. I, I take it to heart every day on my decisions. And so I want to thank you for that faith in me. And I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving out there, count your blessings. We are all blessed in this country. And, you know, spend time with family, friends, and those you love, and, you know, I, I wish you all the best. So thank you very much.
Mrs. Chu?
Um, just one other thing, um, I think it was mentioned before, we have the Play Puffs at the high school, uh, coming up this weekend, so I got my tickets. I'm really looking forward to it, so I guess those of you that might be Harry Potter fans, I think, may enjoy it. So, um, I'm really excited to go, I hope to see some of you there.
Very nice, Mrs. Gwass?
Um, I had the opportunity to attend sophomore night at the high school last night. Um, this was a unique pleasure because I'm on my second child going through the high school, but we didn't get one due to COVID for my current senior. So I was really just thrilled to see the number of parents that came out, really grateful for the guidance counselors that were there answering questions till pretty late. It was really informative, and it's always nice to see all the parents back in the buildings again, talking with everyone.
Up, Mr. Hong?
So, uh, yesterday morning, NASA launched a huge moon rocket. I'm so excited. You know, I had a master degree in polymer science. One of my job at that time was develop coating for the rocket. So, I strongly believe this mass engineering science is the very important tools to keep this country on the top of this world. While we're dealing with so many issues, please keep in mind, STEM is very important, is the fundamental of this country's future. So I really appreciate people's attention to the science, to the engineering, and to the math, and let's work on, work hard on the STEM program and keep this country great.
Okay. Well, see, Janet, as your birthday president, we're going to be ending this meeting at a reasonable hour. You can all put in requests for your birthdays if you want to have meetings that end before 8:30. I will take that under advisement, and I will ask, since we do not have a need for another closed session, for a motion to adjourn, Mr. Corangelo. So, Mr. Winston? Any discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, thank you, and everyone have a very, very happy and safe and healthy Thanksgiving. And thank you again, Mr. Satari, and your wonderful children from Warren Stoffer.
Yeah!